Hi, welcome to the January 30th meeting of the zoning board for Town of Merrimack. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
Alright, thank you. Rich, if you could read the preamble, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined in the form provided by the community development office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all parties regarding a petition, chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones or pagers if you have them.
Alright, thank you very much. If you plan on speaking this evening on any petition for or against or speaking about a petition, if you could please stand up, be sworn in. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God? Alright, thank you. For Fran this evening, Drew Duffy, you're gonna be sitting in. So you'll be sitting in for Fran who is not here this evening. Okay? And we are gonna change the petitions. We have two petitions this evening. One is the Craig La Peña, and the other is a request for rehearing. The request for rehearing doesn't require any public speaking and it's just between the board, so we're going to do the request for rehearing real quick. It's a quick conversation and then we'll move on to the next. There's no sense of making the folks from McLean-Middleton wait. So I'll just open this up right now. We have a request for rehearing on the Celico Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless applicant and Brett W. Vaughan Revocable Trust owner, request for rehearing regarding case number 2018-41 in which the board denied a special exception under section 2.02.1b2 of the zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a telecommunications tower within the residential district. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R1 residential district by the zoning map, tax map for a lot 023. There'll be no public testimony in this. This is purely a discussion of that case and whether or not we allow for rehearing of that petition. I will start with...
Based on the information that we got in our packet, I believe the applicant has some additional information to present to make the case, and so therefore I think we should allow for a rehearing.
Alright, Kathy?
I agree.
Drew, you also, you voted on that? What are your, make sure your mic's on, what are your thoughts on that rehearing?
I agree for rehearing.
Agree for rehearing. Rod, I know you sat in, I believe, on that?
Yes, I did.
Hey, make sure your mic's on. What are your, what's your thoughts regarding rehearing?
I think we should have a rehearing.
Okay, so that is for the rehearing. Okay, based upon that, can I have a motion?
I will so move.
So move.
Second.
And seconded by Kathleen? All in favor of a rehearing for the Celico Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless applicant and Brett W. Vaughan Revocable Trust owner? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain? So it is 1, 2, 3, 5, 0, 0. Lynn, myself, Kathleen, Rod, Drew.
I'm sorry.
I know he wasn't here last time.
I'm in favor.
In favor, so, well, 5, 0, 0.
Five or six?
Five, not Rod.
Five, not Rod. Rich?
Rich.
My apologies. Okay, so we're all set? You're welcome. Have a good evening. Next is Craig La Peña applicant and owner. Variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing manufactured home to remain 31 feet from the rear property line as, whereas 40 feet is required in the construction of an addition to an existing detached garage 17 feet from the rear property line, whereas 40 feet is required. The parcel is located at 58 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 residential and Ocafor Conservation Districts, tax map 5C lot 484, case number 2018-44. This is a continuance from December 19th, 2018 meeting. Obviously, sure, thank you for making, signing in. Also, please, also, please make sure the microphones are turned on. You want to see a bright green light. Sir, did you, you sworn?
I did not.
Okay.
I am correct attorney.
Okay, can you just raise your right hand?
I will.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. If you want to give us kind of a five-minute overview of what we're looking at here and then go into the five points law for discussion, that'd be great.
My name is Robert Shepherd. I'm the attorney for Craig La Peana who is the applicant here. Craig and his wife and his child live at 58 Babusick Lake Road here in Merrimack. Craig and Tracy, his wife, bought the home, it's a mobile home on this lot, from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority on June 28, 2016. This is a small, old, and I would say complicated and busy lot. It's approximately .397 acres, so it's not quite a half an acre, not even close to half an acre. And this particular lot has been in existence since 1968 when it was first approved by the planning board. And it appears, when I look at the plan, 1968 plan, that there was a mobile home located in the lot at that point. The dimensions don't seem to have changed any since 1968. At that time, it was the property of Hildred Bailey. This is, I said, a complicated lot because there is a stream that goes around, I guess, the front and to the northwest of it. There is a easement through the town of Merrimack that goes through it partially. There's also apparently a driveway easement that I don't think is used as well. We are applying for a variance for two reasons, as stated. One, because the existing mobile home that's on the property doesn't comply with the setback requirements. Craig and his wife, as I said, purchased the property in 2016. From my research, it appears that this particular mobile home, which is a 1996 model, was placed on this lot in 1996, and it's placed in such a way that it does not comply with the setback requirements. And frankly, as a result of the size of this lot and the configuration of the lot, I'm not sure it could be set on the lot and comply with the setback requirements. There's also an existing garage on the lot that is not in compliance with the setback requirements, and Craig has proposed to build an addition to the back of that garage, and in fact started to build the addition. He would tell you that he went away on a trade show. Craig operates a small internet business out of the house and in the shop that's in the existing garage. It's a permitted use that the town knows about, and he was away at a trade show. He had hired a fellow to start work on this, but the guy went a little bit too fast.
Yeah.
And by the time Craig came back, the structure was partially up. He then went to the town to apply for a building permit and was told that he needed to get a variance because the lot does not comply. We initially applied for a variance just for the garage and the addition, and then we were informed by the town correctly so that the house that's been there does not comply with the setback requirements as well. So that's where we're at. I can, if you need to know, Craig can explain the business that he operates there. It's a home occupation. It's operated out of the existing garage that he's converted into a shop, and that garage was there when you bought the property as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay. He has no employees. He's the sole proprietor and operator of this business. It doesn't entail anybody coming to the property. There's no customers that come to the property. All transactions are done by way of internet. So if you're ready, I'll go through the variance criteria.
Okay. Each in case there's some questions.
As this board knows, a variance is designed as a relief valve from the ordinance, which if it was strictly applied, would deny the property owner a reasonable use of his property. In this case, Craig La Peana has been using his property as a home and as a home occupation, but he does require a variance to continue to do so. The property in question is serviced by Town Water and Town Sewer, I am told. Granting the variance in this case would not be contrary to the public interest. The variance would allow Craig and his wife to continue to use the property as their home and in a home occupation fashion. It would allow them to use their property to the fullest extent. It would allow Craig to continue to make a living. This is how he makes a living, by operating his internet business off the lot, out of the house, and off the shop. And it is a residential use that's here, as well as permitted home occupation. So it's our position that granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions on number one?
So I have a question, and I'm not, I guess it's not applicable specifically to that, but I guess my question is why, if the lot's non-conforming in its current condition, why build closer to the setback as opposed to, I don't know?
Well, none of it was realized that it wasn't conforming until I went to talk to Robert, and there was a hand-drawn drawing, and he was like, whoa, what's up with this? It doesn't match up on anything. So I had a hire survey crew to come out and map everything, include all the sewers, everything, just so we had a good scope of what we had, and that's when everything kind of started coming out.
I can expand on that a little bit, too. The applicant's attorney referenced the replacement of the mobile home back in 96, I think. We do have a variance on file for that, because as the board may recall, that manufactured homes are not standalone allowed use in the town. So at that time, that applicant sought and obtained a variance to replace the home. They did it relying on a hand-drawn sketch that showed the lot as a perfect square. Now, as you can see on the survey, it is more of a trapezoidal type shape, so the setbacks that were related to the original replacement, maybe the previous order thought that they were adhering to, but I don't really know. But the lot clearly was not that shape, so when I was talking to Craig about the conditions of the lot, and he was trying to say, no, the lines go in this way, and this is this way, and it just wasn't lining up with the only plot plan we had on file, so I couldn't accurately guide him as to how to proceed without a new survey, and that's where all this information kind of came about.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Number two, please?
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed if the variance is granted in this case. It's our position that the lot won't be overcrowded. It's a good and efficient use of the lot. I believe we did give you a copy of the survey. Do you have a copy of that, Fran?
You do.
Okay. And if you can see where the building envelope is, the minimum setback, there's really no place that he could locate, the garage is almost completely out of the building envelope. There's a paved driveway that partially goes over the other lot that comes in, and there's really no other place that he could put this. There would be no negative impact on the health and safety or general welfare of the community, and this is really, I guess, what we would call an area variance because of the small size of the lot. It's not a use variance. The use is permitted.
Number three?
Granting the variance in this case would do substantial justice. It would allow Craig to continue to operate his approved home occupation business, but it would allow him to operate it in a safer and more efficient manner. He's operating out of the shop right now. He really needs to have a space for what he does in the shop and then have an office space. He needs to have a space to store things inside. It would allow him to continue to use the property. It would not have a negative impact on the general public or surrounding properties, and as I said, it's a permitted residential use. If he is allowed to continue, obviously, to live in the house and then to complete the construction of the addition, that's gonna allow him to clean up this property. I believe where the addition is, and you can speak to this, Craig, there was a lean-to or some type of a structure there before that he took down, and it was a pretty ugly...
It was shabby.
Shabby thing. And in the back or the side of the property, there was also another, like shell or something.
There's a shed back there. Is that coming down as well?
Yeah, I'll take that down. I mean, that's all, everything was kind of hodgepodge together.
Uh huh.
It was dangerous.
Yeah.
It was pretty scary. So my intent initially was to remove all of that, and then it just, it got bigger.
Okay.
If you look on the...
And there's also, I have one of those Shelter Logic temporary shelters, because I moved out a large house down the street, and that was kind of my temporary storage, and that just disintegrated.
Yeah.
So all of that will now move also into this area, so it's now, you know, it'll be weather tight and so on versus right now, it's just, it's a mess.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was number three. Any questions on number three? Number four?
Number four is the value of the surrounding properties are not diminished. We don't have an appraiser here or a real estate agent, but what Craig is proposing to do is to really clean up this lot and make it look a lot better. The addition of the structure on the back of the existing garage will enhance the value of his property, will make the assessment larger for real estate tax purposes, and it's our position, based upon our own common knowledge, that it doesn't have a detrimental impact on any of the neighbors and in fact might actually enhance his value, which would in turn enhance the value of surrounding properties. And that's it for number four.
Any questions on number four?
I have a question on the survey. We've got a paved drive. There's a solid line beside it, and there's a dotted line beside it. The paved drive is in between it. Where's the property line?
Property line is the dock property line.
Okay.
That you can see, it says 175 feet.
Yep.
That's the property line.
Okay.
And then the other one is 175 on the other side.
And the dotted line is the setback?
The setback is the minimum building setback line is the dotted line.
Dotted line, okay. And the paved drive is therefore paved drive to your property?
It is, and it partially goes over the lot next door.
Yep, I see that. But it's to access your property?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so the dotted line is what I was talking about as the building envelope?
Yep.
Okay. And the PVC stockade fence?
That is...
So we, when we first got there, again, everything was deteriorating, you know, half the pickets were missing, half the fencing was missing, and we put up like a nice vinyl fencing...
Okay.
...to improve. I mean, I have a son who's challenged, and I needed to make sure he couldn't run either towards the stream or towards my neighbor's yard, which...
Of course, yeah.
...there's stuff everywhere, and that's what we put that up for.
Because it just...
And then he also, my next-door neighbor, took down all his dilapidated fence, and we're just using that new vinyl fence.
Because the fence looks like it's outside the...
It is. That kind of goes to the next unnecessary hardship issue.
Yeah. Why don't we go on to that?
So the denial of the variance as a result of the special conditions of the applicant's property that distinguish it from other properties in the area would result in unnecessary hardship. This is a unique property. I talked about it at the beginning, that this is a complex, small, busy, old lot. So when Craig first bought the lot and didn't have it surveyed, as indicated by Mr. Price, he thought it went straight back from the road, and if you see where the stockade fence is, he thought the stockade fence was on his property. That's where he thought the property line was. If you look at the northwestern border where the six-inch PVC stockade fence exceeds quite a bit, it's boundary line. He thought that was the boundary line.
Sure.
Did not realize that it went in an angle back as it, apparently, as it does. It's a unique property because of that, because of other features on it, as well as I pointed out, there is a stream or wetland that kind of goes through the front of it and around to the side where the six-inch PVC stockade fence is. So it's our position that there's no fair and substantial relationship existing between the general purpose of the ordinance and this property. The general purpose of the ordinance, as the board knows, is to, you know, promote proper development of lots, to make sure it's not overcrowded, to make sure it presents as a good residential lot. This is almost impossible to do on this lot due to its age, its angular configuration, and its small size. It is an old lot, as indicated. It was established by our research in 1968 at least. There are easements that go through it, and the structure of the home that's there now, it's our position is located in an ideal location on the lot. Same thing with the existing garage and the proposed addition. It's really, there's no other place to do it. If you moved it further forward, you would eliminate any parking on the lot, and he does need to have parking. He and his wife both have vehicles, I believe. And allowing the encroachment will not result in overcrowding. It will allow Craig to complete this construction project, to clean the lot up, and to continue on with his home occupation in a more efficient manner. And in this case, the strict application of the setbacks would not be fair and practical, again, given to, as a result of the factors that I just pointed to, the age of the lot, the strange configuration of it, and the small size. The proposed use is a reasonable use. Obviously, the home, it's a residential district, is a reasonable use. Apparently, there was a variance granted to put this mobile home here in 1996 or to replace what was there, probably in 1968 or older model, and the existing garage was a reasonable use. And so what Craig is proposing to do is a modest expansion of what's there. It does encroach because of the small configuration of the lot, the age of the lot, and the peculiar angles of the lot. And as I said, this is a unique lot. There aren't any other lots that are quite like this in the neighborhood. This is a smaller lot than most. The angular configuration is relative to the easement that goes through it, the stream on the front of it, make it a very unique and a special condition, that we would ask that you would consider granting a variance and finding unnecessary hardship.
Okay. Okay, it kind of covered both the first one and the second one. Has everybody felt unnecessary hardship was covered?
Yes.
Okay. What questions do we have for, regarding this for folks here?
I'm just, I figured I'd ask. One of the comments that was made was that it's an internet-only business, and there would be no customers showing up to the property. I'm just kind of curious, what kind of business is that?
I defer to Craig on that.
I need to hear the question.
What's the business?
It's an internet-based business, so I actually import different things from across the world, and I sell them to a wood-turning community. They own lathes, and they make like wood pieces.
Okay.
So I have a website that, I had come back from Afghanistan quite a few years ago, and it started as a hobby, woodturning, and it grew into, people liked what I was doing, so they started purchasing items from me. And it was all internet-based, and it still is.
Okay.
And then I also visit shows where all the people for a state show up for woodturning, like training session, and there's a bunch of vendors, and I'm one of those. So they know me from, you know, YouTube was very, very popular, supporting somebody on there like a long time ago, and he got really big. So the business has grown, and now the stock is everywhere, and I'm bumping, and, you know, I have to watch my kid now and then, and I have to bring him in, and it's like he's trying to get onto, it's been a real blessing. But yeah, it's all internet-based, so I don't let anybody, even people from New Hampshire, it's like, no, you can't come over. And I didn't really know any of the legality of that until I started working with Robert, and he's kind of like, well, we gotta get this all straight, and I was like, oh, yeah, I meet all those conditions. How do I continue making sure I comply? So yeah, it's all, it's an internet-based, all the transactions go through a website, and also the visits. Like I do, I do do some traveling, and that's kind of how this thing all got caught off guard, was I was traveling, traveling, and I seen, you know, I'm like, oh my gosh. And again, it's kind of like, yeah, Robert had been working hand-in-hand to get this all up to snuff. I mean, I had no idea the survey stuff. Oh my gosh, just, he came out and he was like, there's nothing around here that's been able to get tied into. So he spent a couple days just trying to find one little pin to reference and then go. So it's been quite the experience, believe me.
So I guess my other question then is, it sounds like a great business.
Yeah.
My other question is, I'm a little bit confused on the part where you went to a trade show and you came back, and were the dimensions not what you requested?
Well, no, it started off with a friend, my wife's friend helped me, and he was a former builder, he's like 75 years old, and we hit it off because he's a Vietnam veteran, and I'm an Afghanistan veteran. So he was like, I'm gonna come over and I'm gonna help you out, because he came in and saw everything. I'm like, sure. Well, guess what? One day he showed up, and he's like, I'm here to help you out. And I'm like, what? Let me help me out. And he's like, um, we're gonna, you know, get this thing going straight. And it started off with this big, ugly lean-to that he saw in the back, it was already there, that we're gonna pull all down. And once we did that, and I saw that he actually seemed to know what he was doing, I said, well, what, can we make this bigger? And it turned out to where, you know, we started talking foundations and all this. I'm like, no, 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 just pile on tubes and go build it up, a wood floor type of thing. And he started, and we kind of did the, you know, pile on tubes, and then I had to go away to a show. So he's still there doing this thing, and I'm like, the guy's 75 years old, what can he do? I'll tell you what. And he just, a machine, just, the whole floor's done everything, and I show up, and I'm just like, oh dude, alright. And then it just snowballed into trying to figure out how to get down, figure out what to do, and then another show showed up, and he's got the walls up, and my wife's telling me on the phone, and I'm like, what? He brought a guy, he's got walls up, and he's got rafters and woods things, and that's when the town inspector showed up and just said, stop. And I said, okay. And I'm gonna, you know, we'll go down there, and we'll figure out what to do with the town inspection. He pointed me to Robert, and that just was like, alright, the survey numbers come out and all this, and the lot's not square, it's angled, and wow. So it was a blur. Yeah, blur.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Rod?
I got two questions.
Sure.
Looking at the aerial map and the plot plan, where is that shed that you're tearing down? On the plot plan, it's way at the bottom corner of your property. Is it under the trees, inside that blue on the aerial picture?
Oh, the aerial.
I'm comparing these two.
So the furthest point away?
Let's take a look at the aerial.
Okay. So in looking within that blue?
Yes.
Is it under the trees, or is it down in that other person's property?
No, it's, um...
Look at this, it's right there.
Yeah, it's on this. I'm not sure, it would be under the trees in this one here.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I'm looking, I see it down in the bottom corner, and then on this aerial picture, I'm seeing a building...
Yeah, my next-door neighbor, there's cars, there's a little bit of everything back there.
Okay.
That was one of the reasons I put up that vinyl fence to contain my child.
Okay, like I said, I didn't see it on the aerial view.
Yeah, but that's where the shed is, right?
Yeah, the shed would be underneath a big, huge oak tree.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And it's on, yeah, this existing thing. I mean, it's basically hobbled together with whatever was laying around.
Okay.
Boards, there's nails shooting through everywhere.
No, I was just wondering, because like I said, I didn't see it on the aerial, and I saw a building a little further down.
Yeah.
I said, oh, are you in the other person's property?
He's got a whole bunch of sheds out there on his property.
And then the second question, the existing garage, you're not encroaching anymore within that 17 feet on building that, are you?
Yes.
That...
Am I, I'm seeing 17.6 feet to the...
Yeah, no, no more than that, no. The garage is right here.
So 17 feet from the rear property lot?
Yeah, that's the, it's not going beyond that, correct?
So you're currently 17.6 feet from the property line. Wait, what, your addition is not gonna bring you any closer than that?
That's correct.
You're just going, continuing your shed?
So this, this shows the addition. So you're looking at the addition when you see 25.1 and then 17.4, that's, that is the addition.
Yeah.
Okay.
The reason why you show 17.4 is because there's gonna be four-by-fours on the corners, four-by-fours on the corners, and that's all open. So there's about twenty, what is it, twenty-six point one?
Twenty-five point one.
Or twenty-five point one would be the end of the actual structure, and then there's kind of like a, an open area that they built, put like a lawnmower in and things of that nature. And the stuff that's in the lot, you know, the shelter logic, that stuff would go into this open area where is the seventeen point four.
I think what's confusing, when I'm looking at this, I, I'm thinking the same thing you are. It doesn't look like the trapezoid on the aerial view matches this. It almost looks like the trapezoid in the aerial view is shorter. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't...
The survey would trump anything from the aerial view.
Yeah, that's correct. I sure hope so.
So, yeah, just, don't go on the aerial view, go on the survey.
Okay, that was the whole reason.
And then one other question, it's kind of, I'm not sure it's really related to this issue. The neighbor does not seem happy with this at fifty-six. Is there any conversation about you moving that fence that appears to be partially on her property?
That's actually, I, I, hold on a second. That's not what's being discussed.
Right, okay, it was just a general question, that's why it isn't, okay.
But that, that has, that's not...
I withdraw it then.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it has nothing to do with this. What we're solely looking at is just the garage and, you know, seventeen feet from the rear property line, whereas forty is required. That's what we're looking at. And the manufactured home is, will remain thirty-one feet from the rear property line, whereas forty's feet. So we're just looking at the rear property line setbacks on this. Anything else regarding all, all of that? That is, that's another, that's not a related issue, so. That's, and that's not a topic for the evening, but, no, I understand what you're saying. Any other questions, concerns?
So I guess I, I do have a question.
Sure.
It seems like this should be, am I wrong, Robert? This should be, shouldn't this be two separate variances?
Yes, there are two separate ones because of the two separate encroachments, yep.
Okay, so treat it as two separate?
Correct.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
So with that being said, do we want to vote separately, or do we want to vote?
No, it's, it's all in one variance.
That's okay.
Just with two pieces to it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So I guess, then, to follow up with that, if, let's say, the shed, or not the shed, the garage piece fails, will that also fail as the house? I guess I...
All right, let's, let's, let's table that one until, let's do a public hearing. Let's table that for just discussion item afterwards.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, we'll, let's get back to that.
All right.
All right. Is there any other questions regarding the plan for the garage and for the placement of the home? Okay. Probably gonna have some people that are gonna want to speak, so if a gentleman could just have a seat to the side for a second?
Sure.
Is there anybody, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, come on down. I do have a letter. Come on down, you wanna sign in? I know you both are sworn in. Are you speaking at the same time, or one after another? Okay. So I take it, one of you is the son of Linda J. Peeler?
Peeler.
Peeler. All right, if you guys could just have a seat and sign in, I'm just gonna read your mother's letter into the record. Says, "I, Linda Peeler, the owner of the fifty-six Babusick Lake Road Merrimack, New Hampshire, request, property requests that the Town of Merrimack, New Hampshire zoning board reject the request for Craig La Peña of fifty-eight Babusick Lake Road to permit a variance of an existing manufactured home to remain thirty-one feet from the rear property line, whereas forty feet is required. I also request the board reject the continuance of the construction of a new addition at fifty-eight Babusick Lake Road to an existing detached garage only seventeen feet from the rear property line of, line of fifty-six Babusick Lake Road, whereas forty feet is required. I ask the Town of Merrimack to enforce the required forty-foot minimum boundary to build to be put into effect. I, Linda J. Peeler, do hereby respectfully request that my son, Scott A. Peeler of fifty-six Babusick Lake Road speak on my behalf at the Town zoning board meeting on January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen." You must be Scott.
Yes, sir.
And you are?
William Heath, I live at number sixty, Babusick Lake Road.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear you guys separately.
That's fine.
So if, if you wanna go first. Okay. One second, gentlemen.
Just so that, this is fifty-eight?
Yep.
What is this?
Fifty-six.
And you're at sixty?
And you're at sixty, which is here?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So if you'd like to just state your name and your address, and then please feel forward to move the mic over here, you'd be great. Thanks.
My name is William Heath. I live at sixty, Babusick Lake Road. In there, they said they had a hard time finding one of the pins for the surveyors. I have a picture from when he started to put up the fence, and there was a granite marker inside the fence line, two and a half sections in from the rear, uh, post. And so it's over the property on my line. Also, there's been a lot of people going in and out of that property. There was UPS is always in there, FedEx occasionally, and the mail truck goes in there at least twice a day. And other various cars.
Have you spoken to him about the fence?
Since he's moved in, I tried to talk to him about the fence, and I started going over there, and they both got in the car and left. I've never even said hi to him.
Okay.
I've waved when I'm outside with my kids, and he's outside. None of his family has waved back or said anything.
So, okay. So the issue is, is, would be, for you would be the fence, obviously, because it's...
And the added traffic, correct.
Okay. And the added traffic, okay. All right. The, so we're, we're basically hearing on the, on the setback for the property?
That's correct.
The fence is, is definitely, I mean, that's not something that we can necessarily make a judgment on at the moment, because that's not something that we're hearing on. But I, I do understand what you're saying. As far as the, is, outside the fence, as far as the setbacks for the home and, and it being less than what the town requires, is, are you speaking on that at all, or?
The setback on the home, I honestly, it would be a real pain to move that. So I'm, I'm all right with the home, but the garage itself, it's, it's awful close to the property line. And I've been over at Scott's house, and, I mean, there's compressors going. I don't know what he does in the garage. I've never been over there since I was bought in two thousand and sixteen, I believe. But, I mean, there's noise coming from his garage, as well as people going in and out of there. It's already a busy enough property as it is.
That actually brings up a question, Robert, have there been any, is it, is home occupation proved use?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. Craig came to us and, and explained the business, and we have the criteria for what requires planning board review and what does not. And from what he outlined to me, it met the criteria for not requiring planning board review, so we did an administrative approval for it.
Okay.
As for the fence, I don't know if that's something that community development can...
Nope, the fence is a civil matter between the property owners. It's nothing that we get involved in at all.
So, yeah, that would be, unfortunately, we'd be able to help you out on that, but anyway, I do appreciate you, you know, giving the feedback on the garage and thoughts on that.
Okay.
Scott, if you'd like to state your name and your address, please?
Scott Peeler, fifty-six Babusick Lake Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-five-four. The addition to the garage, it is bigger than the actual garage itself. It is protruding the setback by quite a bit, and it's a lot higher than the other garage, the garage roof is. It, the reasonable expectation of privacy is not there, clearly see over the roof, over the fence. The fence that was there was his, the previous property owner had put it up. He knew, he knows the previous property owner, his brother is best friends with him. The property lines were well-established, there were granite markers back there. Craig moved in, he had not said anything to us for months, all of a sudden, there's a fence going up. There are compressors going all hours of the day and night. It makes my dog bark in the middle of the night when a compressor kicks on, wakes up my, all my children, and I have four children, and my wife works various shifts, she's a nurse at the Elliott. It's, we, we have had people show up looking for Craig in his business, walking around our property, looking for Craig. We have children, as I said, the youngest is six, nine, out playing in the yard. There is an increase of traffic and cars in and out. UPS and FedEx blocks the end of the driveway, the end of the shared driveway at least once a day, and the mail truck is in and out of there multiple times a day. The neighbor across the street asked me if I had known what was going on, because he did believe that there might be drugs being sold out of the house with the amount of cars getting out. So I said, no, it's definitely not that. However, he, he does have his, his business there. The garage, front of the garage, the garage door has been removed, so it does not look like a residential garage. It was, it removed, boarded up, and a physical door, a glass door put in, swinging, hanging glass door. So, I mean, it's not valuing my property anymore, because now there's no expectation of privacy for the backyard. The backyard has one two thousand and one Durango in the back. Other than that...
That's your property?
That's my property, yes.
Okay. So that garage, and so the, the building in the back of that garage is still on his property, but it gets close to yours. But according, look, by, when I look at the plans here, it looks like there's a fence that's around that. Is that correct? Is there a stockade fence around that, or?
There is, yes.
Around his garage?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, it doesn't do much for the, is the garage, you know, I, I went and, I, I mean, from what I could see from the road, I didn't really wanna start impeding down people's driveways, but is it, is it, is it a two-story garage or a one-story garage? Are you saying it's a two-story garage?
The A-frames are quite a bit over the roof, you can see that from the road as you drive by.
Okay. I was trying to, trying to get an angle on that. I just...
It, there could be a second floor, easily a second floor around there, and it could easily be dormant even more.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, I mean, as far, as far as the fence or, or the noise, that's, that's a little bit more, like, you know, like a community development, that's a little more on the civil...
I, I understand.
But I, I can understand. So the, so building out that back end of the part of the garage, your concern is?
The encroachment.
Encroachment?
Yes. Vertical and horizontal.
Okay.
And there's a sewer easement that runs right down, like split, physically split side driveways. I'd feed that carrier is drained off of two Babusick Lake Road. It's, if you look at the angles, if they ever have to dig it up for any, any reason, it's gonna be a, an issue.
Oh, yeah. You guys have, you have, you have town, right?
Yes, oh, yeah. I mean, this, this was all in the, this is all in the deed. I knew about it when I purchased my house back in two thousand and eight.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up and rebut?
Just as a brief rebuttal, first of all, it's not a two-story structure. We can provide photographs of the structure, the proposed addition that's there. Secondly, and I'll let Craig address this, he denies that there's a UPS or FedEx truck there every day. I think you said it's twice a week at best. It is a permitted use, so whether the variance is granted or not, it would be a permitted use. I suppose the existing garage at the variance is not granted, would have to come down as well. But the issue that we really see here is, the objection is to the setback, and in this situation, I think we've addressed that setback issue. As a result of the unique configuration and special condition of this lot, it's not able to comply with the setback. Looks like one of the gentlemen is, is okay with having the mobile home stay there. I'm not sure if the other one was or not. But in this situation, we really need to look at the, the situation at hand, what is permitted and what is before the board here today, and I think we've complied with the requirement for the variance.
So I'm just kind of curious on the garage. You're having, so you're, you're adding about, so right now, when I look at the plan, you're forty point one feet from the property line. You wanna go about, what is that, thirty?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty-three, twenty-five feet?
Yep.
Twenty-five, yeah. So what's all that extra space for? Why, what, what do you?
So right, it's basically all office space. It's gonna be, yeah, right now, we have different tables and like a packing area and things like that, that are all in the garage, and I'm trying to move those into that area. And they'll also be storage. Another thing is that, that garage, when it was built, however it was built, every time it rains, water comes into it, and I have to deal with water. And like I said, I, I have my son that I have to watch now and then.
Sure.
And it's gonna be like a, I don't wanna say a babysitting room, but there'll be a safe space within the new area.
Do you, you park your vehicles in that garage?
No.
Okay.
No. So we have two vehicles, very, very, you know, nobody shows, comes over to our place. I mean, I'm not sure what that means, but, and as far as UPS, I deliver all my packages myself to the post office. So I drive out of my driveway every day at five, or quarter to five, to go to the post office. So they're never there. If they're there, they're delivering an Amazon box or something of that nature.
Okay.
And the whole situation with the fence...
That's, that's, that's not, that's not a relevant matter, so we're not, we're not even going down that road.
Okay, very good.
We're, we're just literally talking about the setback.
Sure. And as far as encroaching, I mean, it's, it isn't like I built the garage oversized to what was already there. It's all in line with the current garage. It is a foot taller.
But you did say that the, the guy kind of went a little...
Sure.
Ahead of schedule, a little ahead of schedule, so to speak.
Yeah, correct.
So...
Did you tear down the existing garage?
No.
So the existing garage is still there?
We added on to the back of the existing garage.
You just added on to the back?
It's the same width, it's longer, it extends it.
Same height?
It's about a foot taller.
What about the roof line? What's it got for a roof?
It's a pitched roof.
Yeah.
So the roof matches the existing garage?
No, it doesn't match it. The idea was to build, take down my logic, my shelter logic, that's all dilapidated with the stuff, and put that on top of the garage.
On top of the garage?
It's like a loft area or a second floor?
Yeah, like a loft. No, there's not a second floor in the garage.
Well, a loft is a second floor.
There's a roof on my garage.
Yeah.
And below the roof is where I'm gonna be putting items in there.
All right, and that roof does not match the roof line on the existing garage?
That's correct.
How much higher is it?
It's about a foot, foot and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the, the rectangle here that is the existing garage on your survey. There's a small square behind it that looks like it's about, I don't know, maybe half There's a small square behind it that looks like it's about, I don't know, maybe, uh, half the size of the existing garage?
That's the addition, correct.
And then, behind that, there's a rectangle.
That's where that's all open?
Well, well, the rest of the property is all open, too.
Well, I'm saying...
What's different in that piece?
There's four-by-fours on each corner.
Yeah.
And it's open, it's exposed, it's not enclosed. So, that's where like a, a lawnmower...
There's a roof over there.
Motorcycle.
So, there's a roof on it?
There's, there's an overhang on that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you achieve the office and all of that without the open storage area?
Could I...
Without that area there?
Yes.
And that would, no, not having that open storage area, how greatly does that impact your business or your home?
It impacts it where I don't have anything to put, you know, like my rototiller, my lawnmower. All that stuff right now is on the blue tarps. The snow blower, it, they're all exposed. So, if that wasn't there, then I would have to put up additional sheds to put the stuff into.
And you have no place to put it?
Or put up another shelter logic, because the shelter logic is what was protecting a lot of those elements, from the elements.
Or, you know, or you put a shed up between the house and the, and the garage, which is within the, and you put up a big enough shed to put anything in there?
Or in the front, or somewhere, yeah.
Okay.
If you expanded the existing garage towards the house...
Yeah, there's no room.
Well, it would be... No, you attach it to existing garage, you just go sideways instead of back. It would be longer and thinner than square on this one.
There's, there's literally no room there. Yeah.
Well, I understand that, but that doesn't make it...
I agree.
Legal.
Yeah. I agree. And certainly would make it a lot easier to have that discussion. Um, alright, are there any other questions? Alright, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, before we have any discussion, um, I do wanna ask Rob to go, to go back to, um...
One or two.
Rich's points. Rich's point, and do we hear these as one or two? Because we're talking about two different places.
There should be two separate motions made on this, one for the house and one for the garage.
Okay. So, the people voting are gonna be Rich, myself, Lynn, Kathy, and Drew. 'Cause right now Rod and Lenny are still alternates. Um, we are gonna, we are, I am going to say that we are gonna split these out to different. There's gonna be one motion and vote on the home, and one motion and vote on the garage. Um, we can discuss both at the same time, but there will be two different, I'll be looking for two different motions. So, um, regarding overall, any conver, what's the conversation? Thoughts? Motions?
I'll, I'll make a motion, and let's, let's dispense with the, I think, the easy one. That we grant a variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing manufactured home to remain 31 feet from the rear property line where his 40 feet is required, period. Parcels located at 58 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 Residential and Aqua Fair Conservation Districts. Tax map 5C, lot 484, case number 2018 hyphen 44, I'm gonna attach on A. I'll second.
Seconded by Kathleen. All in favor of the...
Existing.
Existing manufactured home? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So, that's 5-0-0. Okay. The next one is, we're talking about is the detached garage, which we have spoken at length about. Discussion, thoughts? Rich?
So... I think, I, I, I think it's kinda tricky, because, uh, I mean, this is definitely encroaching, but at the same time, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that there is any, any feasible alternative, at least none that I can think of, so, I mean... Just due to the nature of the property itself.
Lynn?
I think that's the nature of a hardship. And it's applying it towards an existing lot that's an unusual shape-size dimensions. That's the purpose of a variance, is to allow a reasonable use on a lot that is not quite conventional.
Okay. Drew?
I agree, um, that the lot is not conventional.
Make sure your mic's on.
I agree with, um, Lynn about the lot not being conventional, and in order to put an addition on the, um, existing garage that they would have to do, they would have to encroach on the property line.
Kathy?
I agree.
I, uh, yeah, I, 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 I see it's an exist, I understand why you're here for the variance, and I can see the, uh, the need to, to build that out. Um, I, I understand the guy went a little faster than you expected, um, regardless of whether or not it's a do and ask for forgiveness thing, that, that's not, we're, we're talking about the e- extension. I think that you can accomplish what you wanna accomplish without the covered open storage space, 'cause I, I think that there are sheds at Reed's Ferry that you could pick up, that, not, you know, that could, that could shelter all of that stuff and wouldn't require such a...
Further encroachment.
Further encroachment to the, to the, to the property line. Um, so, you know, I, um, so from that perspective, I mean, I understand why you're here, I understand the variance. Um, I, like I said, I, I might've gone, tried to go sideways and, and tried to avoid a little bit of it, but you said you can't do that, I understand and respect that. Um, I would probably be more inclined to go forward, uh, myself, if the covered open storage area wasn't there, but, um, that's, you know, that's, that's up to the board to kinda make that decision, so, um...
Well...
My, I, I understand why it's there, I understand why he's putting it there, I would look the same way. I think, though, that, that could be accomplished with it. I think you could accomplish this plan without as much encroachment. With that being said, that's just my take on, on it from, from that perspective.
But the variance is asking for the encroachment at 15, at 17 feet, not 25 feet?
I, I get that, I understand, no. And I understand why he's asking for it, so...
Question.
That being said, do I have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Question for Robert. Can we change that 17?
Um, I believe since, I believe the board can only act upon what is in front of them.
Yes.
So, you...
So, we can't?
Right. He's asking for the relief of the 17.4 feet. So, that's where you're at. You have to vote on that.
So...
One, one more question?
Yep.
If we deny this, then can a different variance be brought?
A, if you deny this, he has the right to reapply, um, with a different...
With a different, okay.
Some application that's substantially different, then the board would have to make that finding.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
I propose that the board grant, uh, Craig a La Piana variance on the section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an addition to an existing detached garage 17 feet from the rear property line where his 40 feet is required. The parcel is located 558 Babusick Lake Road in the R4 Residential and Aqua Fair Conservation Districts, tax map 5C, lot 5, 484, case number 2018-44-B, which will designate it as the garage.
Correct, it's the garage. Do I have a second? Second? Seconded by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstaining. So, that's 3, 2, 0. Uh, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Alright, so... Next, next item of discussion. Um, so, um, I, I'm going to make the announcement, although I think I've told some of you already. Um, with great sadness, Fran Larue has, uh, has stepped down from the board, uh, for personal reasons.
And significant appreciation for the years of service she has given to the board.
I was getting to that, I was getting to that, you cut me off.
Okay.
Fran, Fran was on the board, uh, when I started about 10 years ago, and, uh, I have, she has been a friend and a mentor, and I, I hope everything's okay, certainly in our prayers, and, uh, she's been very valuable, not only to ZVA, but to other boards, uh, in town, I, in fact, I think she was, uh, on council or an alterperson at one point, but she's, she's been of, uh, incredible essence, uh, of incredible, um, part of the town. So, I hope her and wish her well. That being said, we do now have an opening for a full-time member on the board. We have two alternates, um, 'cause I know Lenny is not interested. We have two alternates that can decide whether or not you want to. Um, it's, you, you could do paper, rock, scissors, we could do a battle royale, whatever you wanna do. Um, uh, if you want, if you're interested, I think they need to contact...
Yeah. Becky or Kristen upstairs, yeah, to, in general government to talk about that.
So, Becky Thompson, you send her a, a letter of intent if you wish to step into the role. You do not need to, but you obviously, as an alternate on the board, you are more than welcome to. Um, and so...
And there may be others in the public.
Yeah, and there may be other people in the public who want to, uh, step up on board. Um, I know that I'm talking with a lot of people, they'd like to come in through the alternate path, uh, before taking a full member position, but, um, it certainly is your choice. If you want to, it's there, if not, it's fine. Yes, sir.
Does this complete her three-year term?
Does this complete her two-year, one-year that she's got remaining, or is it stat fresh with the new?
It does not.
No, I, since, i- if the term were to be filled, or if the seat were to be filled, um, by one of you, you're already on the board to a term, it would just be for that, I believe.
It would be your term.
Yeah.
So, if your term is up in two years, then it would be two years.
Okay.
Your term is up in a year.
So, so, I would complete my term versus complete her term?
I believe so.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is there, uh, is there any relevance in the terms?
I believe, I believe they're staggered as two, two and two.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, but has anybody left the board?
Honestly, I don't know the answer to it, but you, general government would know, I don't deal with the term lengths, but...
Okay. Lenny, do you have a question? No? Alright. Um, so, that's, so, if either of you are interested, you can have, you can email me, talk to me, or talk to Becky, actually, talk to Becky, let her know, and then she'll let me know. Um, any items for discussion?
Uh, no, that was the only one.
Alright. Uh, we have the minutes for the December 2019 meeting, um, is there a...
I move we approve as printed.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Motion by Lynn, seconded by Kathleen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, that's three. Anyone else wanna vote that was here for the meeting? Okay. Four. Alright, that's good, four. So, Lynn, myself, Kathleen, Drew. Vote in favor.
4-0-1.
4-0-1. Rich is abstaining. Alright, and...
Patrick, if I may?
Yes.
We all have a brand-new book. I would suggest...
Turn your mic on.
If somebody wanted to look at it.
Oh, that's good.
Chapter 12K, page 17, ends on 23, is something you might wanna review in the near future.
What page?
Chapter 12K. Page 17 to 23.
17 to 23. Uh, yes, that would be everybody's homework, uh, chapter 12K. That would be everybody's homework. Thank you very much for pointing that out.
I mean, I realize everybody will read the whole book before the next meeting, but...
Alright. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, Drew. And seconded by Lynn. So moved, thank you very much, have a great night, and everybody, please drive safe.